Okay, call this Village of Green Hills council meeting to order for January, or February 28th, 2023. Clerk call a roll.
Mr. Halter?
Here.
Ms. Herman?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Hudson?
Here.
Ms. Osmanoglu?
Here.
Ms. Walter?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Okay, we have a prayer by Maria Walter.
Lord, we ask you to send your spirit of servanthood upon all of us gather here this evening to do your work for the benefit of our community. We ask you to bless our elected and appointed officials so they may deliberate with wisdom and act with courage, lest the members of our community who comes here to speak before council, so that they state their cause with honesty and humility. Lord, we ask you to bless us all and teach us to be generous in listening, so we may understand others' points of view. Lord, I beg you, please, protect all our men and women in uniform, so they would come home, whole body and mind, and just home to their families. Lord, we ask you to bless us all, that everything we do here tonight will move you to welcome us one day into your kingdom as good and faithful servants. We ask this in the name of our brother Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the bled of the lead.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He came representing the American Legion for the presidential allegiance. Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
All right, we have the council meeting minutes of January 24th, 23, and council meeting for February 14th, 2023. There are no corrections. Minutes will stand approved, carrying no corrections. And we have a public presentation. We've got, we have two today, but the first one will be honoring the donors for the purchase of seven defibrillators, and then next will be a presentation by the library.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to give you a little narrative and background to explain just what this presentation is about. It all started with my colleague to my left, Councilmember Maria Walter-Willard, who came to the police department late last year to tell us that the American Legion Auxiliary wanted to help us with the donation for some needed equipment. And she was told that we were in the process of outfitting a new officer, and one of the big costs that we always faced was the cost of new fitted body armor for officers, and it was always expensive. She told us that she would present this request back to the group. Then she further asked me, what is an important need beyond the reach of the budget that is still needed? And I told her automated external defibrillators. I explained that the department had them several years ago. When I first started, going back about 10 years ago, I found them on a shelf. I took them to Fire Chief Tony Spath and said, I'd like to be able to activate these. And he took, took them and looked them over, and he said, they're just obsolete. They, they can't be used. So flash forward to now, and that was what I told her, that was something that we really truly needed. They're important probably now more than ever because it's difficult, and Tony Spath will tell you, it's difficult to always staff every shift in the fire department, and often, often our officers are out on the street, and they're going to get to a squad run before our Green Hills squad comes. So we took a look at, at those, and Ms. Walter-Willard said that she would go back to the American Legion Auxiliary. And she surprised me at the December council meeting when she and another representative from the Auxiliary came with a $1,000 donation towards the purchase of an AED. Ms. Walter-Willard then matched that donation with another $1,000 donation of her own. So those were presented at the December 20th council meeting. So we began work on locating and pricing available AEDs. They're generally about in the $2,000 range per unit. We discussed the logistics of having one unit and assigning it to one of our on-duty officers. The problem with that is that we're in the northern reaches of Hamilton County, and oftentimes, if we take a prisoner to the Justice Center, or a patient to the hospital, or we have to take something to the lab, where the off, one of the officers that has the AED may not be available. So we had some discussion with the supplier who we located who had the lowest prices, and we were able to obtain a pretty significant quantity discount. We began to thinking about placing an AED in each one of our cruisers, and here at the municipal building, so one was always available here. So after we developed that price, we had some discussions with some of the donors in our community, the very generous people in our community that always support us. We received a check from an anonymous donor for $8,770. That matched the amount that we already had that purchased what you see in front of council right now. We now have an AED that after this meeting Sergeant Holbrook and Officer Braun will make sure is back in each cruiser. One will go back in our lobby, and the manager actually used rec funds to buy one for the swimming pool, so that would be safe. The generosity from our citizens, I believe, almost certainly means that lives will be saved. We also collaborated, and this was a very important part of it. We collaborated with our Green Hills Fire Department. We purchased the identical units from the same manufacturer that they have, so that once we're on scene, if we start the AED, they get there, we're going to let them take over, and they can just exchange the parts to it. The other component was, they're pretty easy to use, but you get a little nervous when you're going to use something like this without any training. We didn't have to worry about that. Lieutenant Sheets, as you're going to hear more about from our fire department, while recertifying our officers as she always does, in first aid and CPR, also trained us on the use of the AEDs. The partnership that we have with our citizens and with our fire department made this dream possible, and it will benefit our residents for years to come. We're very grateful to all of those who made this happen, and at this time, we'd like to recognize not only Councilmember Walter-Willard, but our representative from the Legion and Lieutenant Julie Sheets. You would please come forward. And I hope you'll excuse our backs, but we have instructions from Waycross to face this one. So in terms of Ms. Knox and Ms. Walter, the verbiage on these are the same. You are being awarded the Citizens Appreciation Award from the Office of the Chief of Police. This is a warning to Maria Walter-Willard and, excuse me, to Joan Knox. In the certificate, it reads, "A dream that has always been beyond our, the reach of our budget, has been the goal of outfitting all of our officers cruisers with an automated electronic defibrillator, or AED. This unit with its lifesaving capabilities can make the difference between life and death when present in precisely the right moment. In our village, police officers often arrive on the scene while a medic unit is being dispatched. Equipped with the proper tools and training, they have the ability to save a life when seconds counted. This obstacle providing this tool for all of our cruisers has been cost. An effort began late in 2022 to obtain donated funds to procure these lifesaving devices. As information developed and quantity discounts were discovered, you and others stepped up to donate the necessary funds to make this dream a reality. Your assistance allowed us to quickly move forward and accomplish the goal. Your actions have served the residents of our community and undoubtedly will save lives. Because of your concern for our village and devotion to its residents, our citizens will continue to have the best lifesaving tools available to its first responders at the best possible price. The men and women of the Green Hills Police Department and the officials of the village are grateful for and appreciate your contributions to the department and to our community. We are honored to acknowledge your accomplishments, certify our appreciation, and wish you well in your future endeavors. In recognition thereof, we have caused our signature seal and the badge of the Green Hills Police Department and the Green Hills Municipal Officials to be affixed on this, the 28th day of February in the year of our Lord, 2023. It's signed by me, by Yvonne Kovak, our manager, and by our mayor, David Moore. Ms. Knox, congratulations."
Thank you.
Ms. Walter-Willard, congratulations. One last presentation to Lieutenant Julie Sheets, in some of the same verbiage, but the last paragraph is somewhat different. It says, "Once obtained, you, Julie, volunteered on behalf of the Green Hills Fire Department to train our entire staff of officers in the proper operation of the AEDs. Your training allowed us to place these devices in our cruisers, knowing that we had the skill and training to use them when, when needed. Your knowledge and dedication made this project operational. We are truly grateful for your assistance. The men and women of our department and the officials of our village are grateful to you and appreciate your contributions to our community. We are honored to acknowledge your accomplishments, certify our appreciation, and wish you well in your future endeavors." Thank you all so very much.
Thank you. Do the police officers need to grab a couple?
We'll get them right after the meeting.
Okay.
We know where they're at.
Okay. All right, we have another presentation by Jennifer Weiger for the library.
Thanks so much for letting me come, and how wonderfully exciting. And thank you to all of the donors to make such a wonderful lifesaving gift possible. Just wanted to offer a couple of updates at the Green Hills Library. One of the most exciting that just started last week is we now have COVID-at-home tests in our branch, and you are welcome to stop by, anybody who could use this in the community. It's a limit of four per household per day, but we have them available, and we have no problems with supply at the moment, so do feel free to use them and stop in at any point if that would be helpful for anyone. I also wanted to highlight that the library system offers in-person testing at our Pricehill branch and our Sharonville branch. Pricehill is on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday from 10:00 to 6:00, and Sharonville is Thursday and Friday from 10:00 to 6:00, and they can do testing for COVID, flu, RSV, and strep. So just a service that we have that maybe would be of value, wanted to highlight that. We also have some fun programs that are coming up. We have a brand-new gaming program called Game On, and we're going to be playing Rummy Cube on, it's going to be on the first Saturday of each month at 11:00 a.m., so you can come in and try out a new game, make some new friends, and that's for, you know, teens, adults, whoever would like to come. It's not just for children. We also have a new book club, so it'll bring us up to four. So we have, our romance readers meet on the second Saturday of the month, and that's also at 11:00 a.m., and we have copies of the book available for you to check out for the upcoming one, if you have time to read it. If not, stop in for the next one shortly. We also have a backyard herbal program coming up, so if you've ever wondered if there was something to do with that plant besides pulling it out of the ground because it's ruining the perfect lawn, there might be a few things that you can learn from them. So that'll be on Monday, March 13th, at 6:30. And teens can come to the library on Wednesday, March 15th, at 4:30, and we have little squishy toys that are also keychains and stuff, and ways to decorate them, so they can customize their very own squishy. And then kids can celebrate, we celebrate that spring has sprung with a Spring Bingo program on Tuesday, March 21st, at 4:30. We have a whole range of wonderful activities. I'm only offering a few highlights. We have copies of the calendar at the branch, or you're welcome to come and check out anything on our website, chpl.org. March is also National Women's History Month, so we wanted, we have displays and materials for checkout, and if there's any in person in particular that inspires you, we'd be happy to make certain that we get any materials that you would like on that person and have them sent in if we don't have them on hand right away. And then something that I'm not certain always gets a lot of press or anything, but we have something called a discovery pass, which is a free admission to local cultural organizations and museums and such, and you can use them for the American Sign Museum, the Cincinnati Art Museum Special Exhibits, the Cincinnati Museum Center, the Great Parks of Hamilton County, the Harriet Beecher Stow House, Pyramid Hill Sculpture Park and Museum, and the Taft Museum of Art. Most of those are available electronically, and you can go on to chpl.org to get them, but Cincinnati Museum Center and the Great Parks passes are physical ones, and only some branches have the museum passes, so you'd have to check online to see which ones, but all of them have the Great Parks pass, including Green Hills, so if you want to swing through Wynton Woods and enjoy it for the day, you are welcome to come and check out that pass as well, or you can take a bit of a trip and get your electronic pass to visit Pyramid Hill or a bunch of the other ones. Just wanted to give a little bit of an update of where we are. Does anyone have any questions?
We appreciate you coming.
Hey.
Always appreciate a chance to, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
I'm a big fan of my Libby app, so I get most of my books electronically nowadays, so it's a great resource to be able to, free books.
Free ebooks as well?
From my home.
You can do it while it's snowing, you can do it while it's storming, as long as you have power and your device is charged.
Okay. Do we want to make the change in the agenda now, or wait till after council committee reports?
Is it okay to do it now? Make an amendment to the agenda?
Yeah. Okay.
I moved to amend the agenda to add the reappointment of three individuals to the Community Programming Board, Regional Council, Governments, and CPB holding.
Second? Oh, wait, I can't. Oh, it's just an amendment. Yeah, second.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Okay. All right. That's good. Okay, reports of municipal officials. Yvonne Kovak, Municipal Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start with our legislative report. We have just a couple of items tonight. The first item is, I think it's our first supplemental for this year, and we're, what we're doing is simply transfer, authorizing the transfer of money that we did appropriate, intended to spend, transferring them into the proper accounts for expenditure. The next item is a resolution that urges the state governor and General Assembly to restore the local government funded pool, if possible, as much as we can get. And just for a little history on this, in the early 2000s, the state started phasing out, I think tangible personal property was the first to go. I think they did that over like a five-year period. Then they started hitting on the local government, and that it was, no pun intended, but it was devastating when they eliminated the estate tax, because it's, though, I did an average of $500,000, but there were years when it was far more than that, that really helped our budget, and ever since those have all disappeared, we now get maybe just a very small amount from the local government, maybe like $38,000, I think, compared to what it would have been. It has really impacted it, so it would be nice to think they could attempt to restore some of those to help local governments out once again. So this is a, just a resolution of support that would urge, urge them to do that. Okay. Then on regular items to report, we do have, we have a lot going on. First, I'll go ahead and mention the Malloy's listing. You've probably read on, on Facebook or our website about that, but I have listed it for lease only. We're not looking to sell it or, or exchange it, I think was the other expression. We're, we're looking for a lease, and, you know, our residents have always had a desire to make it be a gathering place, so, you know, therefore a restaurant, restaurant bar, you know, it's been successful off and on as a banquet center, so listing it, I'm sure we all felt was the best way to give it the, the most exposure, the greatest exposure out there in the market to get somebody into our unique building. So it's listed with a, excuse me, lady, her name is Lori Sullivan, and she's with Equity, and she's our Senior Vice President of Sales. If anybody would want her number for interest in the property, call our office, and we can provide you with her direct line. Also wanted to touch on aggregation. The opt-out letters have gone out. Hopefully you've received yours. This is for the electric program. We've gotten some questions about the, how wise are rates of high? We do put it out for, we have a consultant who puts it out for shops the rates, and that was the most competitive rate we could get at this time. I will tell you that the Duke Energy, they, their rates are different than when you're in a program like this. They vary on a monthly basis, whereas opposed to, ours will be a locked-in rate, and it is estimated that their rate is going to go up significantly around July, June, July, meter readings. So people might be a little bit hesitant to go right now. I'm going to go for it, because I don't want to forget later on in the year, but they do feel pretty strong that soon our eight will look pretty good compared to what the other options are out there. And I have a few warnings to give you about that in a minute, but the other good thing is that we are doing just a shorter term this time. It's a two-year term, so that in two years, we can once again shop the market and see if the rates have gone down a little bit. But yeah, a few words of caution to those who, who may want to opt out of our electric program, that many offers that our residents probably get on the phone or in person, when people go door-to-door, will have really big termination fees. Ours just has not, does not have a termination fee. We feel that's important, but somewhere as high as $270. So people may be unaware that if you, if you don't take it for the, you know, starting in April, and you want to take it in July or August, whoever you're with may charge a pretty high termination fee to get out of their program. Some offers also will just simply revert, when it gets to a certain rate, revert back to a variable rate that is set by the supplier. And there have been some recent ones that are as high as $50.18, so that makes our $8.09 look pretty good. But you can compare all this on the Public Utility Commission's website. They have a, it's called Apples to Apples, where you can put in our providers and compare the rates. So, you know, feel free to do that at any time, because I, I just think we have a really good rate, and it will be continued, will continue to be competitive. So again, just a reminder, this is electric only. We have a really good rate now for our gas, and that goes through 2024, so we're in pretty good shape there for now. Our Home Improvement Repair Program is now being advertised. That's always very popular. So this is for homeowners only. It is based on household income and size. It can be used for painting, siding, gutters, roofs, doors, windows, steps, railing, sidewalks, and driveways. We're limiting it to $3,000 per grand. If you're going to do sidewalks, it's $1,000 for that, and everything's available now on our website or here, here at the village. Then just a reminder, I think I sent it out to all of you, that the training sessions for newly elected officials is out. That's going to be March 13th through the 16th. And I want to congratulate Teresa, because she has finished her public records slash sunshine law, sunshine law training, so good job.
Thank you.
That's what I have for now. Thank you.
Questions of the manager?
They have come through my house also, trying to see the bill and, from Duke or whatever it was, and the only thing that I do, I have a lock screen door, and I said, do you have a, some kind of identification from the village that you can do this, and/or, and also a badge from where you're coming from? And if not, just give me a second, let me check with my police department. And then the answer is, I'll come back to you, and I never saw them again. So I know that it was not sanctioned, it didn't have a permit to be knocking at the doors or ringing the doorbell or anything, but they are out there.
Right, and, and our residents call, and that's great. That's what they should do. So, yeah, beware of those. Our program will never go door-to-door, and it won't call you on the phone either, so they say, because they, they think nothing of saying, oh, we're the Green Hills program. No, they're not. No, they're not.
And all those of us who have already opted for it years ago, whatever it was, it continues on, correct? We don't have to do anything about it.
Correct.
All right.
Did you say that this one is for gas or for electric?
This one's for electric.
Okay. Law Director Jeff Forbes?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing really to report. No, we're not involved in any pending legal action right now, and there hasn't been any new legislation introduced at the state of municipal interest, but we will continue to watch.
Yeah, give them time. Won't be long. Clerk of Council Teresa Lally?
Nothing to report.
Chief of Police Neil Furtman?
Might have one or two things, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
We're continuing on a local level to deal with what is a national epidemic, and that's the theft of mail. That first struck us here in Green Hills towards the end of December. Our blue mailbox in front of the shopping center was apparently tampered with. These keys are, we understand, on the dark web selling for about $25,000 each. And we've repositioned that box to make it a little more visible and a little easier to solve any kind of theft that we might have there. And there have been two stolen cars that have been involved with theft from our mailbox. The first was an apprehension in late December made by the Springfield Township Police Department. When they recovered a stolen vehicle, and while they were searching the vehicle, they loaded, located several backpacks, and in those backpacks, they located over 500 checks made out to local companies for payment. They were able to make contact with the business to find out where the checks and bills were dropped off, and they were dropped off in our mailbox here in Green Hills. She dropped them off in the early evening of the 16th of December, and the mail was stolen sometime later on December 16th or 17th. Then on 11, at 11:52 in the evening on February 5th, Sergeant Tony Patton began pursuing a vehicle that was stolen out of Norwood that was going through our village southbound on Wynton Road. While attempting to get the vehicle to stop on Wynton, near Wynton Woods, the occupants began throwing mail and checks out of the vehicle. We can show you the video. It looks like confetti coming out, but the checks and mail were going everywhere, and we did have a number of officers, including our own and officers from other jurisdictions, that policed the roadway and picked up every piece of mail and every check. So with assistance from Springfield Township, we, who threw out stopsticks, caused the driver to lose control at Wynton and Compton. After a foot pursuit, the driver and two occupants of the vehicle were apprehended. They were taken into custody and charged with charges from our department. We also collaborated with postal inspectors, and they will be facing indictment federally for the offense. During the arrest, we also confiscated cracked cocaine from the vehicle, and our officers, as I mentioned, checked for all of the evidence that was strewn throughout the roadways. We believe that mail was taken from Forest Park and nearby areas, possibly our own mailbox as well. I gave Sergeant Patton a commendation for his very alert apprehension. I wrote to him, as I watched this video, I listened carefully to the audio, as you calmly called the pursuit in a matter-of-fact manner and stayed calm during the apprehension and eventual arrests of the suspects. Your demeanor was professional, and the results of the incidents, incident was outstanding. The crime of mail theft has exploded, and there is very, every indication that these criminals, these three criminals were heavily involved in its practice in this area. Your work prevented multiple citizens from becoming the victim of these predators, saving them from losing large amounts of money and stolen funds. These actions resulted in some outstanding police work. We had another incident of outstanding police work that didn't involve mailboxes, but involved breaking into cars and also vandalism to one of the homes on our east side. A juvenile from Forest Park and another from here in Green Hills have been arrested by Green Hills Police, and we charged them with vandalizing a Green Hills residence and also breaking into multiple vehicles in Green Hills during recent early morning hours. They told officers they were walking through Green Hills in early February and checking vehicle door handles, and then going through vehicles that they found unlocked. The breaking and entering charges relate to the pair's entry into a vacant home in the G section. Once inside, they used black spray paint to vandalize the home's interior. They also They also discarded some stolen property taken from some of the vehicles that they went through. And the property has been returned to the owner. I looked at some of the pictures, and this house was being remodeled. There was brand-new fixtures in, for example, the bathroom, all laced with black spray paint, freshly painted walls. One of our officers, who was in the back of the council chambers tonight, is going to court on that case in the morning. And he's told me that the owner of the house has said there's probably $12,000 to $14,000 in damage that'll have to be repaired. So as I mentioned, they were both incarcerated. They'll be heading to juvenile court tomorrow. Officer Zach Braun, who was with us earlier this evening, was commended for his handling of the case. Sergeant Carl Holbrook, who was also with him, wrote to him, your due diligence was exemplary in this case. Your attention to detail and desire to make sure the outcome was appropriate is greatly appreciated. The amount of time and effort this case required was no small feat. I commented on the, both of their actions, that the actions of these two suspects placed our community on edge and caused an abundance of commentary on social media. Your actions and the resulting arrest and incarceration of the suspects was publicized and put the community at ease and restored a sense of safety. All of the vehicles tampered with were unlocked. The Green Hills Police Department again reminds our residents to lock their vehicles and not to leave valuables inside the vehicle, especially when visible. All these criminal acts likely would not have occurred if the targets had been secured. And we do need our residents' help to prevent that crime. We had another stolen vehicle that went through our area on February 8th. Forest Park Police investigated the report of a car theft of a white Hyundai Sonata. An all-county broadcast was dispatched. Officer Brandon Young positioned himself watching Wynton Road where he alertly observed a vehicle matching this description traveling southbound on Wynton. Once he was behind the vehicle, he found that it was the vehicle that had been reported stolen. He informed the Hamilton County Communications Center that he was behind the vehicle traveling south. He did not activate his lights and start a pursuit planning instead to initiate what we call a felony car stop with another officer. The stop was planned for Wynton and East Compton as a park ranger was stationed there to assist. Springfield Township, however, notified us that they had stopsticks out at Wynton and Hempstead. Unfortunately, the vehicle missed the stopsticks and sped off. After a very brief pursuit, Officer Young determined that continuation would be too hazardous due to the driver's extreme recklessness, and he terminated the action, returning to Green Hills. Short time later, the vehicle did crash in the city of Cincinnati. And I again commended Officer Young, stating your alertness was commendable in locating the wanted vehicle. In following up, it is difficult to do the safe thing and the right thing when adrenaline levels are high. However, your actions showed maturity and clear level-headed discretion. Continuing along the lines of excitement in our village, we had a swatting incident that occurred. On January 30th, it was around 4:10 in the afternoon, we were dispatched to an address in our B section in response to a report of a shooting. The detailed descriptions and graphic descriptions of the injuries were provided by the caller. We responded immediately, and with the assistance of Forest Park and the park rangers in Springfield Township, we did some further investigation. It was eventually discovered to be a false call, but that took some doing. Officers made contact with the residents inside the home. We checked the home and determined that everything was fine. We investigated to attempt to determine the source of the false call and developed information that had originated from Stockholm, Sweden. However, we then found out that the caller had masked the IP address on the, the call. So we're continuing to investigate with some federal agencies to try and find the true source of the call. The FBI calls these incidents swatting, and it's usually making a hoax call to 911 to draw a response from law enforcement and optimally a SWAT team. The individuals who gave, engage in this activity use technology to make it appear that the emergency call is coming from either the victim's home or somewhere else. Sometimes swatting is done for revenge, sometimes it's a prank. Either way, it's a serious crime, and I believe, Mr. Forbes, I think there is some action in the legislature or has been to increase that to a felony offense, and we, we welcome that. As we get a little closer to tax season, people have gotten all their W-2s and they've started preparations of their taxes. And we want to remind everyone that tax schemes will increase during tax prep season. People have lost millions of dollars in their personal information to tax scams. The Internal Revenue Service will not initiate contact with taxpayers by email, by telephone, by text messages, or social media to request personal or financial information. You have to recognize the telltale signs of a scam. That may include that they want you to pay in a gift card, which people sometimes fall for, unfortunately. The IRS initiates most of their contacts, about 95%, through regular mail delivered by the United States Postal Service. There are some rare, rare circumstances where the IRS will call or come to a home or business, and that includes when a taxpayer has already been dealing with them on an overdue tax bill or as a delinquent or unfiled tax return. But as a general basis, they will not contact you except by U.S. mail. So we, we ask people to be alert, hang up when you get those kinds of calls. Don't respond to the emails. Don't provide them with any information. If you do believe or you do have a question about whether or not the call is valid, we urge you to call the Internal Revenue Service directly, and their telephone number ironically is 800-829-1040. We have that on our website. We have a number of upcoming events. One is getting very close. Our first event for 2023 is Coffee with the Cop. We are planning that for Saturday, March 18th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. The Fosters at the Troubadour have graciously allowed us to use their facility again. They will be providing coffee, pastries, and donuts at no charge. We hope that, that you come and join us and have a cup of coffee with us. And of course, you can also purchase a delicious full breakfast from Foster's if pastries and donuts aren't enough. We have our open house again. This will be our second open house on May 20th. We'll be starting our Park Talks as weather breaks. And over the summertime, we're going to have our usual activities, game time with GPD on June 10th, and cooking with the cops on August 1st. We have our annual report that has been released this past week. It's been compiled and released. It's on our website, and you can obtain a copy there and take a look at it. So we recap all of our activities from 2022, and we'll also give you some previews of some of our 2023 activities. I'm going to conclude before statistics with the Good News Department. With nicer weather comes basketball. We have enjoyed a preview of nice weather on some of our days. One of those was February 8th. Officer Zach Braun, who was here this evening, noted the following on his log. Played basketball with juveniles in the F section. Officers win. Officer Braun scored all five points, then provided a juvenile a courtesy transport home to Damon Road. During the month of January, we made 25 criminal arrests, including charges for aggravated assault, assault, criminal mischief, domestic violence, possession of drugs, possession of drug paraphernalia, interference with custody, and failure to appear. We responded to 195 incidents, including 27 squad runs, 14 thefts, 13 intrusion alarms, seven checks on well-being, seven parking complaints, seven lockouts, seven trouble runs, six disabled vehicles, and five noise complaints. We provided mutual aid to our surrounding law enforcement officers, agencies. In 22 instances, we issued 35 traffic citations, 36 warnings, and investigated five traffic crashes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions with the chief?
Yes, Chief, first of all, I want to thank you for presenting me with this. I only know too well that the police department technically is the first respondent. You came many times at my house, and so Sergeant Patton did a lot of the calls as well. And that's the reason why when I gave you the donation, I said it was in memory of Thad Willard. And there's an also dear friend, Kenneth Workman, because he was a volunteer fire department member and for 20-plus years, and EMT. And the other intuitive lead I had, it was thanks to Mr. Wellidge because he had given a radio to the fire department memory of his wife for his wife passed. So I am touched. I'm tremendously happy with the outcome. And anything else you need, call me.
Thank you so much.
All right, Mayor's report. I have court receipts for the month of January. Checks will be issued to the state of Ohio for $1,212, to Hamilton County for $45, and to the village of Green Hills, $5,466.20. That's all I have. Okay, we have committee reports, Community Development, Jeff Holder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met yesterday at 5:30, and a number of the topics were already brought up in the bond's report concerning Malloy's. We've got an update on that. We also got an update on the park. There's, I don't know if you briefly want to mention what's happening with the park you had, so that you might give me equipment?
Right, try to start on the pathways, so.
This is the Village Park.
The Village Park, yes. We have a lot, nice problem to have is we have a lot of parks. And then we are also bringing back the beautification awards. There's going to be one in mid-April and then one in October. So we encourage residents to spruce up their property. And it's, it'll be nice to get out some nice weather. Keep in mind that it does have a reward of a $25 gift certificate, usually of your choosing. You have to retrieve the pick from if you're selected. But we want to encourage residents to continue to care for their property, and, and I think we think this is a good way to do it. That concludes my report.
All right, Finance and Audit, Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel at your place tonight, as, as usual, is the highlights from, from the Financial Director's monthly reports. Included in this is the December report, which, which kind of gave you an idea of where the final, end of the year numbers should, should land. That report most likely will be presented in better, greater detail at our retreat when that's scheduled. In addition to that, I have the January general fund recap. As you can see, the, the income tax receipts continue to perform well. There were no real estate tax due goods reported this time. I'm pretty sure that the, that's come in in the interim. So it kind of makes the, the final general fund balance look, look a little odd, but, but that should adjust next, next month. At this point, the general fund balance for, at the end of January 2023 was $1,762,474.74. There were no transfers in, in, in January, and appropriations were on target, relative year-to-year comparison. The transfers noted in, in the final transfers are what we'll be discussing later on. So if you have any questions, happy to answer. Thank you, sir.
Questions? Next, Safety, Melanie Hermes.
It is a sinus infection, and I do have antibiotics. You can see me sniffling up here. It's not COVID. Our safety committee did-
We know, we know where you can get a test.
I'm on antibiotics. So the safety committee met today, and we talked about the fireworks. One of our residents had brought it to our attention. She had some concerns about fireworks law since the new change from the state of Ohio. So one of the first things we did was talk about the current, the new law and how that affects our current ordinance that's on the book, books. So the new law went into effect last year, right before, on July 1st of 2022, and it has made our current ordinance that on our book is not-
Valid.
Valid anymore. So we did discuss some of the changes that the new law had, and we did talk about having updating our new ordinance to at least recognize the fact that the state law has changed. And we did talk about possibly doing some kind of informational campaign, more about how to be a nice neighbor when it comes to handling fireworks and making sure you do follow it within the letter of the law, but also how to be cognizant that not everyone is fond of fireworks, but also clean up after yourself. Don't, don't be inconsiderate when doing it. So one of the things we did say is because we do want to update the ordinance, we are going to put it into a work session. So we have recommended that then our fireworks ordinance gets discussed at our work session in March. My goal and the safety committee's goal was to have an update to our ordinance before the 4th of July. I don't think it will be anything in contradiction to what the Ohio law is. Obviously, you can't really contradict the law, but it's mainly just to make sure that our ordinance is valid, and if people are breaking it, that we do have some teeth to the legislation so that we can enforce it, instead of leaving it like it is where it's unenforceable. So I have information that I will hand over to the clerk, just so she can have some of it. And she loves it when I do that. So that was the main thing with our committee. We do not have another committee, committee meeting scheduled at this time, but we probably will sooner rather than later as more things come up.
You can pass it on?
Yes.
All right. Recreation Cable Television, Rachel Hudson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met yesterday at 6:07, and we talked about the Harvest Fest, just calendar of events. I'm sorry, I just want to hand that you're talking on. And we also talked about the-
Just Pat.
We also talked about the CPBRGCO. Very good. And so I do have a motion. Can I do that now?
No, we'll do that when we get into the business.
That's, that's what I said, we're going to do that later. And then Dana from Waycross was nice enough to send me an email, and she just said, good afternoon. Registration is open for our teen summer film workshop. It's for grade seven to 12. It's eight sessions in two weeks, and they make a movie from scratch. If you have any questions, you can call Waycross or you can go to www-waycross.tv/summerworkshop. Two, this year, individuals and organizations are invited to sponsor the cost of a student to make the workshop accessible for the mid, for the widest number of students. If you have questions about that, you can call Waycross and talk to Dana. Three, just last week, there was a new, brand-new Talking with Green Hills episode with Avon and Chief that covers police news, coming events, and more. Check it out on the Green Hills Waycross page. And that's it.
What she didn't mention is that the student workshop is award-winning student workshop. Their videos have won awards. And I have watched a couple of them, and they are very entertaining.
And we thank them for televising this award-winning counsel.
I don't know.
Okay, moving on.
I have a question. Some of the citizens have asked that they have not received in the mail or seen for renewal for the pool this summer. And I see some of our signs that it's on the shopping center that appears in there that the applications are ready. Are you going to be sending any in the mail?
We did. We mailed over 200.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And we'll follow those up again with the email a little bit closer to the time, but we always start with the hard-
When were those mailed out?
Yeah.
Were they being thrown out of cars?
I got mine about a week, a week and a half ago.
Yeah. Because I have not gotten mine, and I would have-
Yeah, I see. Yeah.
Okay. Well, mail service isn't where it used to be. You know what? And I'm just going to use this opportunity to mention that it's really getting aggravating because we get a lot of our mail returned to us unless we make it Cincinnati, 45218. And that's, I'm personally finding that very annoying. But I don't know that that's why you didn't get yours, because some people are. We're getting them back, but we better-
Versus Green Hills, right?
Right. Yeah. Okay, keep a watch. Maybe it's just delayed. Otherwise, we might need to do another- Otherwise, we might need to do another one.
They always have a registration in the paper, too.
Oh, right, right. And it's online.
That might be coming up at the end of this week.
Thanks for letting me know that. But yeah, I'm sure it's been a while. I would guess at least two years.
Well, there are some people that haven't received and have been asked the questions.
Okay, okay.
All right, services streets, Jennifer Osmondoglu.
We have a meeting tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. with an exciting agenda. So I will be happy to report about that after our meeting.
All right. Okay, in the governmental affairs, laws and rules, Maria Walter.
We had a joint meeting with safety today to cover the fireworks.
All right. This is an opportunity for residents and non-residents to make comments solely regarding legislation that's on the current agenda. Non-residents must obtain prior permission. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and state your comments. Comments will be limited to four minutes. No one, we have no unfinished business. New business, Resolution Number 2023-RO3-F, Resolution Making Supplemental Appropriations and Transfers. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2023-RO3-F, Resolution Making Supplemental Appropriations and Transfers. Whereas the 2023 annual appropriations were adopted on December 20th, 2022 are to be amended. And whereas appropriations must not exceed the total available resources of the village per Ohio Revised Code 5705-436A5. Therefore, an amended certificate of estimated resources has been requested from the county budget commission. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of Village Green Hills, Ohio. Section one, since certain actions are needed in the monies appropriated so to permit the village Green Hills to meet its fiscal obligations for the year 2023, the following items of expenditures are to supplement the appropriations for expenditure for the year 2023. Fund description, none, no activity. Section two, that the following transfers be made from previously appropriated monies. From General Fund 1,002, Police Account Number 2901, $100,000. From General Fund 1,000 to Swimming Pool, Account Number 2909, $136,000. From General Fund 1,000 to Malloy's Banquet Hall, 2910, Mount, $30,000. This resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments?
Again, this is just money that we've already appropriated and putting it into action.
Okay. All right. Clerk, poll the council.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Ms. Alcino?
Aye.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution Number 2023-RO3-F passes. Next resolution is Number 2023-RO4-F, strongly urging the Ohio governor and members of the Ohio General Assembly to restore the local government fund to pre-recession levels. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2023-R04-F, strongly urging the Ohio governor and members of the Ohio General Assembly to restore the local government typo, yeah, fund to pre-recession levels. Whereas the local government fund was reduced in 2011 by 50% during Governor Kasich's administration from 3.68% of the general fund funds to its current level of 1.66% of general revenue funds. And whereas past Ohio General Assemblies have repeatedly decreased funding and revenue sharing in recent years, in addition to significantly reducing the local government fund, including eliminating the estate tax and phasing out the tangible personal private tax. And whereas these reductions have resulted in the loss of revenue of approximately $500,000 annually for the village of Green Hills. And whereas the sudden revenue loss has made it increasingly difficult to provide basic services, rebuild infrastructure, and bolster public safety services. And whereas the municipalities experience success in fostering safe communities, building sound infrastructure, and increasing economic development, the state of Ohio reaps the benefits as well. Whereas a reinvestment in the local government fund would aid the state in its goal of lowering taxes on the individual by enabling municipalities to decrease the local tax burden, now therefore be resolved by the Council of Village Green Hills, Ohio, that section one, the Ohio General Assembly should restore the local government fund to pre-recession levels, ensuring that the local communities are able to provide critical services and improvements in infrastructure and public safety. Section two, that this council does hereby declare its opposition to any further cuts to the local government fund or the future diversion of revenues from the local government fund. Mr. Mayor, I wholeheartedly support the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded on this resolution. Any comments?
I actually have a couple of comments. One is, is this a group effort? In other words, are all the local communities doing this at the same time? So that's helpful. You know, usually with the one pebble doesn't affect that much. That's one thing. And then I think one of the things I see as a challenge on their end is unless they, I don't see them doing this, go back and bring back the estate tax and everything else. Do we know that they have the funds in some other place? Or are they spending the money someplace else and not giving it to the local community?
I think in the case of local government, they're spending it somewhere else. They diverted it from us and they moved it to other causes.
And the state rainy day fund is at an all-time high. So, yeah, so.
It's raining here.
It's not raining here.
And if I remember correctly, years ago, even before my time, the local government fund was instituted by the state because they took some taxing abilities and funds away from communities back at that time period and created this fund to make up for the money they took away from the communities. And, right, yeah. Back to it. Okay, clerk, poll the council.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Ms. Sospinoglu?
Aye.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution Number 2023-R04-F, strongly urging the Ohio governor and members of the Ohio General Assembly to restore the local government fund to pre-recession levels, passes. Okay, we have any, council members have any comments?
The motion.
Oh, that's right, the motion. I forgot to write that in. Okay. Yes.
Okay. I motion to reappoint. I would like to make a motion reappointing Melanie Hermes, Nancy Moore, and Galena Radford as trustees from Green Hills to the Community Programming Board, Regional Council of Governments, and CPP Holdings, Inc. for the term from April 1st, 2023 through March 31st, 2026.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Clerk, poll council.
Ms. Hermes?
Epstein. I can't vote on it.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Ms. Sospinoglu?
Aye.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. All right, now, do we have any, any council members have any other comments before we do the municipal calendar? Okay, calendar?
Tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., Services Committee meeting.
Okay.
Just the coffee with the cup on Saturday, March 18th, since we won't have a formal council meeting, just a work session. That is from 10 to noon.
Okay.
My foster's at the tributary.
All right. Okay, now's an opportunity for residents, non-residents to appear before council. Non-residents must obtain prior permission. And no, non-residents have contacted me. This is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and state your comments or questions. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for a response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to four minutes. Speakers may not yield any or all of their time to other speakers.
Monique Mason-Halter, Green Hills resident. In December and last month, I spoke at the council meeting about a lawsuit filed against the Federal Communications Commission, or the FCC. A U.S. Court of Appeals for the District of Columbia Circuit ruled in favor of environmental health groups and petitioners that sued the FCC for not updating its 1996 safety limits for human exposure to wireless radiation. The court held that the FCC failed to respond to, quote, "record evidence that exposure to RF radiation at levels below the commission's current limits may cause negative health effects unrelated to cancer," end quote. Tonight, I'm going to read some excerpts to you from case reports about documented illnesses after 5G antennas were installed on top of the rooftop of an apartment building and on top of an office building in Sweden. I'm bringing this to your attention because the Green Hills Small Cell Facilities Ordinance is still not nearly as strong as ordinances passed by other local municipalities. It does not protect us from the irresponsible placement of wireless facilities, both 4G and 5G, and the installation of unneeded infrastructure. The first case report was published on the Environmental Health Trust website on January 11th, 2023. If there is time, I'll also read excerpts from the second case report that was published on the Children's Health Defense website on February 23rd, 2023. Case Report, Illness After 5G Antennas on Rooftop, New Paper. Case Report, The Microwave Syndrome After Installation of 5G Emphasizes the Need for Protection from Radio Frequency Radiation, by Lenart Hardl-Mona Nielsen. In this case, report, in this case, report to previously healthy persons. A man aged 63 years and a woman aged 62 years developed symptoms of the microwave syndrome after installation of a 5G base station for wireless communication on the roof above their apartment. A base station for previous telecommunications generation technology, 3G, 4G, was present at the same spot for several years. Very high radio frequency radiation with maximum peak value were measured at three occasions in the bedroom located only five meters below the new 5G base station compared to maximum peak prior to 5G deployment. The rapidly emerging symptoms after the 5G deployment were typical for the microwave syndrome with, for example, neurological symptoms, tinnitus, fatigue, insomnia, emotional distress, skin disorders, and blood pressure variability. The symptoms were more pronounced in the woman. Due to the severity of symptoms, the couple left their dwelling and moved to a small office room with maximum peak RF radiation. Within a couple of days, most of their symptoms alleviated or disappeared completely. This medical history can be regarded as a classic provocation test. The RF radiation levels in the apartment were well below the limit proposed to be safe, below which no health effects would occur, recommended by the International Commission on Non-Ionizing Radiation, or ICNIRP. These now presented symptoms of the microwave syndrome were caused by non-thermal effects from RF radiation and highlight that the ICNIRP guidelines used in most countries, including Sweden, do not protect health, human health. Guidelines based on all biological negative effects from RF radiation are urgently needed, as well as monitoring human health. Conclusions, 5G is being rolled out without any studies showing that 5G is safe for humans and wildlife. To our knowledge, this is the first study of health outcomes in persons exposed to 5G RF radiation. Within a couple of days, a new 5G base station caused severe symptoms in two previously healthy persons that correspond to the microwave system, the syndrome. Am I already done?
Yes, you are.
You mean, you don't want to hear about what this did to two men in their office building?
No.
All right.
Okay, next time. Anybody else? Okay, if not, meeting adjourned.